And like I said, I mean if-
I'm sure they might overlap.
If it ends up that I have 12 questions, then I might sort of try and synthesize them together in some way, and I'll send out a draft list of five questions.
Okay.
Total.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't require a written response, I just think-
Yeah.
Help them prepare, so that way they can come-
Well, and it gives you a guide too, so when they show up here and stand in front of you, you ask the same five questions, and you kind of stay on target, and you can vary depending on answers and follow-up.
Right, exactly.
Just a jumping off point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And can we invite the Board of Selectmen to attend that meeting that we?
The which meeting? Wait a minute.
Well, are we just gonna do it all in one shot, or?
No, I guess what happened the last time was the Planning Board had a meeting with the applicants, and then the Board of Selectmen and them met together. I assume that that's what we'd be doing this time around.
But there was enough Board of Selectmen in attendance, I'm not sure if it was a joint meeting, but they both had a quorum at the Planning Board meeting where they interviewed, so they did have a joint meeting, just because they had-
Well, if the Board of Selectmen didn't deliberate or participate, then that's not a joint meeting.
They asked questions.
Okay, and again, I mean I-
And then when they had their second meeting, the applicants weren't required to attend, and they just discussed it amongst themselves and voted.
Then we can certainly do that, we can look at having two joint meetings, I don't know how that would work as far as scheduling, but we can notify them that that's what we're, our intent is and what our schedule is, and see if they would like to attend. And there's enough time between now and then to sort of make that work.
Right, but we each get one vote, so-
Correct.
Including them, so how are they gonna get, if they're not at the meeting where we're interviewing the candidates, are they gonna have their own interview and meeting, or?
I don't know, again, this is-
Alright.
It's a coordination of effort, and-
Perhaps we should check with them?
Well, that's, that's, what I wanted to do was find out where you folks were, and then we can take that back and sort of adjust with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Applications don't close for another week, so we don't even know what the final pool of candidates looks like.
Okay.
And at the time that it's closed, you'll be informed of who they are, and all that kind of fun stuff.
Right.
That works for me, so I guess we'll work on getting-
So the next meeting, we'll coordinate what the final schedule looks like, and-
And we'll get you some questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Just to give time for drafts to circulate.
And you'll solicit input from Ken?
Yes. So do you want to jump into the tome that I passed along to?
At nine o'clock at night, who doesn't?
Is that anyone?
Actually, you know what, no, seriously though, I mean, I got into it a little bit, about halfway through it, and there were just a lot of things that, you know, a lot of, as you would say, scrip news errors, and I just need to go through. I didn't get a chance, because I didn't print it out-
That's fine.
I'd like to go through and just make those, for starters.
Yep. And again, this is really just kind of sitting down, head down-
Yeah, exactly.
Some of it's trying to get formatting and a level of information into some semblance of consistency.
Sure.
And some of it's trying to convey information, so I expect it's riddled with errors.
It is, so I was just, you know, it's hard to know without getting to that first stage where you want to go.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So, Mr. Chairman, so if it's okay with you, I'd like, I personally would like to take it, you know, one chunk at a time, do some homework, and then-
I would like you to mark up the hard copy as well.
Yeah.
Sure, that's fine, and also, I think, give Ken some time possibly to get some input, I know he's very good at the bylaw interpretation and the proofreading of it, so that's fine. Let you off tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Alrighty, notices and communications, then.
Have all been scanned to you? Actually, I don't even know if there were any, I don't think there were any, so-
No notices from Abutting Communities.
There weren't.
Do we have any updates regarding development statuses of Unitil or anything like that?
I mean, they're going great guns, they've got the building about half-sheathed, all their steel is up. I think it's gonna be a slow build, it's a gigantic building, and they're just plodding along.
And has the storage units gotten their full-
They have not. They do not have full occupancy yet. They owe us a, they have to finish their paving and landscaping, and they owe us an as-built, and then they can apply for their full occupancy.
I have a question about previous Director's Items. I noticed in the last Abutting Communities activity, there was a growth facility proposed in Fitchburg.
Mm-hmm.
Any idea about that?
In Fitchburg?
Do you know if it was approved, or?
Uh, there's been two or three proposed in Fitchburg.
Okay.
And I know, I know one is under construction, I think one was approved, and one is still in process.
So they've got three in-
I believe so.
Yeah, they got one on, I think, one's in operation, wasn't it on Airport Road?
Yeah, I believe that's the one that, I think they just finished and started. There's one on the west side of Fitchburg, over in the area of, like, Great Wolf Lodge, on the north side of Two, and there's one, I believe it, is it Bemis Road, up where the Iron Horse is, off of Airport Road, and Airport Road comes into it.
Okay.
There's another one proposed over there.
Interesting.
An old industrial building.
Is that across the street? Behind the tire place, or?
No, 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 it's off of Airport Road, on one of the side roads, behind one of the furniture places, the furniture place that's there.
So the Harvey? Oh, that's a window place.
No, it, it's a local furniture place, it's a-
Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else? Meeting schedule, good?
Yeah.
So, looks like the 26th, we're gonna have the car wash back, that joint meeting will go away, the 10th would most likely be applications and the cell tower, and then we might have another meeting jammed in there on the 18th, for the joint meeting.
Okay.
July 18th.
July 18th. So the 26th, the joint is off?
Yes. I mean, with Ken not being here, I don't think that's a-
Yep.
Alright, any more public comment from the public?
That's my hat-trick. The, is the Planning Board looking to start a process where you will ultimately end up rezoning certain areas in the town?
I think that after the completion of the use table and the rewrite of the definitions, I think it's reasonable that the Board would look at the zoning map, and take the definitions that they've created and proposed a town meeting, and start to identify if there's areas that would be better served by being zoned differently, or if the way that it's currently zoned is appropriate, and meets with what they're hoping going forward.
Because I'd like to, if that's the case, I'd like to know the compelling reasons that would precipitate such an action, because I just don't, I don't see it. And as long as I'm up here, I will tell you that much has been said about, you know, business development and economic development and what have you, and I think that Lunenburg is a unique town, and a good town, but you really have to want to come here. It's not, you know, right off the main highway kind of thing. And historically, we have, as a community, found, you know, stores and opportunities in adjacent cities, so I just didn't want to not be aware of what, and why we would ever do something like that.
Well, I personally, and my recommendation to the Board professionally, is not that we need to go and blow the map up and change everything, but I think that there's an opportunity to look at the way they've defined new uses, look at the way that the zoning is currently laid out, and there may be some parcels that are zoned in a way that is use-intensive that could be dialed back, and there are some areas that are zoned in a limited way that may benefit both the community and the area where they are by being made a little bit more open to development. I don't think it should be a complete and total, but I think it's reasonable to check in on your zoning on a regular basis, and I, if I'm not mistaken, it's been, you know, more than a decade, and probably several decades, since the zones themselves have been adjusted or reviewed. Maybe the review ends with no changes, maybe it ends with a few minor changes. I don't, I don't think it needs to be a, we're gonna blow everything up and we're gonna start from scratch, I think it's more of an audit of what we have, and, you know, going through this zoning process, I think that there's certainly been a lot of adjustment to definition and use, and where people think things would be appropriate, that might change what certain property classifications or zoning district lines might meet.
The discussions stem from, when we were talking about the use table, okay, over the last six months or so that we've been working on the use table. In certain areas, because of a changing demographic, because of a changing world, some people might want to run a small business out of their home, and there have been some opinions that sometimes that might be an appropriate use in certain areas, but it would require a zoning change in some areas for you to do that, and in other areas, you know, it wouldn't make sense. So as we're going through the use table and redefining what we want to see in different areas, it sort of leads you to the conclusion that, well, some things are gonna have to change in order to make that kind of lifestyle, you know, possible in the town.
Therein lies my concern.
Okay.
And the concern I have is, as you have gone through the use, I think your terminology was, we thought that this might not be appropriate here, it'd be better suited over here. I really don't think that that's a discussion for the Planning Board to have without input, significant planning, significant input, rather than making an arbitrary, and could be a capricious decision, on something like this.
No, it can't be, it has to go before the town.
And let me just tell you, I mean, part of my concern is, with the extension of this commission, or the architectural, whatever the hell it was, they included my house. Yeah.
She means-
Yeah, nobody came to me, and I don't want it. But I am, there's nothing I can do about it, so I sure as heck don't want, however well-intended this Board might be, to say, you know what, I think it would be great if we did such-and-such over here, and what about changing this over there? Having been the victim of something like that, I want to go on record as saying I have sufficient concerns, and I would really like to have a more definitive outline as to what it is you're trying to accomplish, who has brought these concerns to you, and it's been my understanding that if you wanted to run a home occupation, three days a week, and go the other two into Waltham, you could do that, you know? So I would much rather see some give and take in that regard, rather than going through and rezoning, you know, the area.
Through the Chair, are you talking about the work that the Board's currently doing on the use table and definitions, or the actual zoning district map?
The actual zoning district map.
And I think that that's far off until all of the uses, use table definitions are nailed down and passed by town meeting. I think at that point, the Board, and I would encourage them to do multiple discussions, multiple meetings, and review, and if they feel there's changes necessary, put a proposal forth with a thoughtful reasoning, not just, as I said, blow it up.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that perspective and that point of view, but that's how this Architectural Preservation District started. Well, it's a great idea if we do this, and the next thing you know, Dave Rogers' house is in a whole bunch of other things, and I don't want to be there.
Yeah.
And last I heard, I mean, I don't think anybody else than Karen and Dave Rogers are paying the taxes. You know, so I just don't want it to go, and this, by the way, isn't my first rodeo.
I am aware.
Okay, so I've seen how these things gather momentum, and before you know it, well, this is all we're gonna do, is change the definitions and the uses, and then the next year, well, we changed the definitions and the uses, so now, what we should do is to augment that, is to change some zoning areas, so this is what we'd like to do, and before you know it, you're backed into a corner.
Oh, I think that that's a natural iteration, to review the zoning map as you update the bylaws, as I said, I think-
Now, wait a minute, no, I don't mean to be specific, but I do. Updating the bylaws or the use?
Well, the uses are part of the bylaw.
So you wanted to redo the whole host of bylaws?
The entire protective bylaw, the zoning bylaw-
Yeah.
Needs significant-
We've been working on that for-
...temperization, really.
You know, and I don't want to come across as argumentative, we have been working on this zoning bylaw since I have been here.
Yeah.
Forty years. Two-point-A, point-nine, point-seven, point-C, changing the third word to the fourth this and do this, and we're doing it for years.
Not wasting our time with stuff like that.
And we're not done yet, you know what I mean? It's just, and whenever I hear this rezoning, I say, wait a minute, I think we were, personally, this is my own personal thought, that we were brought down, you know, the primrose path with all of the changes and the center, and we're gonna do this, and this, and this, and all that stuff, and nothing has been done. In fact, we didn't even have the rules and regulations that were promulgated, right? So, I mean, how important could that be? You know, so I'm, there's a, as you can tell, there's a great deal of frustration on my part, and I just don't want to see this start gathering momentum, and all of a sudden wake up and say, well, this is what we did, and this is why we did it. So, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Dan.
I would like to input on that as well.
Sure.
By the way, who's son is this? What a modest young man. I mean, he's the best.
So just to follow up on Adam's assertion, we, the zoning was updated in 2016 and 2015 due to bylaw changes, but before that, it had last been revised in 2003, and before that, it was revised by bylaws approved in 1990. 1990 to 2003 to now, I would rec, I would, I'm positive that we have had considerable improvements in our infrastructure, and it has expanded in good ways, and I believe that just that fact alone would merit some rezoning of some areas that are fully capable of sustaining a lot more than a single-family house. Speaking back to your business.
I appreciate your perspective, I don't necessarily agree it, because I haven't seen it, but that's okay, I mean, we can, you know-
Oh, sure, no, the disagreement is healthy, I think.
Yeah.
Right.
But I actually-
Thank you.
I agree with you, we need more input, not less.
Right, and I was-
And I encourage anyone who has anything to say to come up and share whatever they need with us, because we take it pretty seriously, so-
I know, and when you talk about significant participation, we had 50 people at our last town meeting, so I mean, I would like nothing more than the room to be filled when we go over this use table, but-
We'll keep pushing for it.
That's not the case.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Any more public comment from the public? Going ones? Ongoing items?
So I don't have final 40B information for you, but I do have a quick update on it, including the units currently under construction, and I'll formalize this all in writing when I have all the data in front of me. It looks as if we're about 120 units shy of our required 10%, that would be inclusive of the 124 units in Whalen Luxury.
What about Hollis?
Hollis does not count, because it's not under construction.
If it were under, if they got a-
If it were constructed.
If it were sold, and, it's not intent anymore, it actually has-
They need to have a permit in their hand.
Okay.
Like a building permit. And the safe harbor for both of those would be over at this point, based on the unit count, the requirements of safe harbor, and the time between their approval and now.
Oh, okay.
So-
So there's a time limit, you're only, you're only-
You only get two years, if you create 1%.
From completion?
No, you get two years from the approval.
Okay.
So those both were approved more than two years ago.
Alright.
Could we-
So Whalen Luxury Apartments, they just got their permit.
They're under construction, yes.
Right, but we only have two years to count those towards safe harbor, is that what you're saying?
No, no, once they're built-
Okay.
They go on the SHI.
Okay.
So they count against our 10% quota.
Okay.
Because we have a housing production plan. If we approve 1/2%, we get 1/2% of the residential units in town, housing units, we get one year of safe harbor. If we approve 1%, or, I'm sorry, 3/4 of 1%, we get two years of safe harbor.
Okay.
So Whalen Luxury would have qualified us for two years of safe harbor, but we, it would have been from March of 15 to March of 17, based on the approval date, so it would have been expired-
Yep.
At this point.
Can we just, can we, not tonight, but can we have a discussion about options in terms of, you know, maybe changing the regs a little bit to increase our margin on?
We certainly can't-
You have the data.
That would go into the bylaw. If we hit 10%,
Yeah.
We just need to maintain 10%, and we're permanently in safe harbor. Well-
Right, I understand, but-
I see, you're trying to stay ahead of the curve-
Yes.
On the developments that, yes, on the developments that trigger the inclusionary housing-
Correct.
To make up for the ones that get in with five, six, seven units.
Yeah, just a discussion, I don't, you know, let's get, again, public input and see if the town wants to-
And that would just, that actually will be part of what we're proposing in the fall, or when we finish the use table stuff, because it's under the, under Section 4 in the uses apply to all districts, so we will have a conversation about that.
Okay, good.
This sounds like a good point, I was gonna wait till Board comment, but this is a good place to bring it up, is at the Stormwater Task Force meeting, looking through some of the material that was provided to us by our consultant, I noticed one of the footers was, one of the notes for, one of the things that he was writing about was the 2015 census for Lunenburg, and I thought they only came out every decade, on the 10, on the 10, on the 0, but it was explained to us that they've got a new one, I think you explained it.
Yeah, well, there's the 10, the full census, which happens every 10 years, and that's generally when you get a lot of your more nerdy numbers, you know, the really deep numbers, economic basis, that kind of stuff. They do a modified census, it's not called the census, it's the American Community Survey, and they produce blended numbers. It's a, I'm not coming up with a statistical term, it's a moving average essentially. So depending on the community size, they do it for a five-year average or a three-year average, larger communities get three years, smaller communities get five, and so they blend five years together of statistics based on a selected percentage of households that answer, and then they extrapolate those answers out. So each year, there's a new number, but it's based on a different length of time and average.
And very good information.
Generally basic information.
And that was very good information, but my point of bringing that up was that in 2010, the census data was 10,080 something people in town, and this five years later was 11,400, I think, something, so that's about 1,400 people in five years. It's considerable, I think. For this town, for this sized town.
Seems like it would be, yeah.
More fires, growing houses.
I also think in that time period, you've had a number of denser, smaller footprint developments come into town.
Yeah.
I mean, between 2010 and 2015, Emerald Place went into construction.
Yeah.
Tri-Town Estates went under construction, so you're seeing population growth, but you're not seeing, and it's not to say that you aren't seeing the conversion of openfield or farmland to housing, but I don't, I don't think that number is necessarily indicative of a massive denigration of that, because you're talking about several hundred units located on previously disturbed sites that weren't greenfield development. So I think you just have to, it's a scary number to see, and it does certainly make one think about the way development's happening in town.
It's all in my quadrant.
It's because we're out to get you specifically, Dan.
Well, sometimes it feels that way.
But it is worthwhile to note that, and to be conscious of it going forward, but I think that we can take some solace in, it's been reused projects that are supporting a majority of that.
Sure, yeah, I'll give you that, I'll give you that, but our 26 square miles is not increasing at all.
No, no, that's why land keeps going up in price, because they're not making any more.
You can be Maynard.
Limited edition.
One farm.
They're but as far off the map, well, they're further off the map than we are. Anyways, I'm gonna digress.
No, no problem, is that, that's it for ongoing items? Actually, I was gonna ask, we had a discussion today regarding putting together a bylaw priority list, can we add that to the ongoing items, just so we can discuss it at some point? Alright, board comments or concerns?
Uh, oh boy, yeah, it's hot.
That's it, is that a comment or a concern?
Yes. I would like to mention that I'm not quite sure who had the idea for it, but when the Board reorganized last year, we reorganized, we reordered the committee reports, such that it went right down the line, and I thought that was a very, very smooth way to have it listed, and I don't know if there was an interest in having it reordered again.
Think it was reordered.
Yeah.
It changes every, well, you know-
Well, no, but that's what the Board of Selectmen do, that just speeds it up, they just go down the line.
I think Marjorie generally does it, I don't know that she, I think she must have missed it this time.
Sure, no, this is our first meeting since reorganizing, so, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, because I thought that did help it goes a little smoother.
It did.
Um, anyone else? I have some comments, not necessarily concerns, so I did get to meet with Adam after becoming Chair after our last meeting. So basically, we had a discussion on what my role is, and just, I think, part of it is how to accomplish our goals that we've established, so again, I asked him to put together a list of bylaw priorities, like what we're working on now, the use table, there's things that we're not gonna have much say in, it's basically gonna be dictated to us, like the stormwater management, marijuana coming up, and then I know we had talked about including a couple of smaller things, like the parking, per-table parking, and things of that nature, so, just so we, not looking to accomplish everything on that list, but just so we know, if we're gonna tackle one major thing, maybe we can get some smaller things.
Structure will be dictated to us.
Well, alright, what we're shooting for, basically what we're shooting for for the next town meeting.
He's, I think he's saying that the town isn't choosing to address marijuana, it's being thrust upon.
Yes, yes, okay.
As opposed to the town saying, oh, we have parking, but let's, let's figure out the calculations and make them, you know, more contemporary.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, we're gonna have to talk about it at some point, because it's gonna be knocking on the door, and I'd rather do it proactively than reactively.
The Planning Board, previous to you guys coming on, we actually did sit down and come up with, I think it was like 15, 15 goals?
Yeah.
I don't think that's what you're referring to.
No.
Okay.
So maybe it might behoove us to take a look at the-
So maybe it might behoove us to take a look at those?
We did send those around, those were circulated.
Yeah. Discuss that amongst ourselves.
I think Greg wants an accounting of the bylaws, major and minor, and give just a tickler list so that the board can say, "Okay, we're addressing this major one. Let's see if we can cherry pick these couple of small ones and fit them in in term."
Where we're going next.
Yeah.
Right, and just kind of, to the next town meeting, or special town meeting, what we're looking at. So, I mean, we'll have a year before the next one, but just have a goal of what we wanna get on that agenda. And then, so, again, for me personally, I think that we could be more clear with our direction to Adam at times. So I probably will be entertaining more motions, 'cause I know a lot of times we have things that everybody raises their hand and they're, think it's a good idea.
Everybody agrees.
But I think we need to just take action on it, so basically, I just wanna formalize it in the form of a vote, and that way, he knows that's what the will of the board is.
Will you be driving that effort?
I will entertain motions. So I'm not looking for everything we do to have a motion on.
No, no. Just if you think it's important.
That is important, that I get the feeling that the board wants to move forward with, then I will entertain.
That's all, I'm just saying, we, I know personally, I can use some leadership on that, you know what I mean? Just because it doesn't always occur to me that that's something that's worth, you know, pressing on, you know what I mean?
Right, and I think it's our responsibility to convey to him what's important.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and then I just have been presenting myself to the land use boards, introducing myself, just to encourage any communication with them if they have comments and things of that nature. I've received a lot of positive feedback, so I'd like to try and initiate some sort of meeting with either the chairs or groups, so I've been asking, and there has been some interest in that, so...
Good.
I don't know how. I'd probably have to facilitate that through Adam. But if, at some point, there is an interest of the chairs to have a group meeting, is that something we can...
We can figure something out.
We can figure, I'm picturing something along the lines of a tech meeting, just, we sit down, we all field input from our respective groups and see where it goes. If it bears fruit, great. If it doesn't, at least we can say we tried and...
That's a good idea.
So I don't think anything's, anybody's, don't want it to turn into finger pointing and contention. I just think there's areas we can improve and support each other, so...
I agree, if you can improve communication, you know, between the various boards. Although it seems to actually be getting a little bit better lately, too. I mean, we're getting more feedback from certain groups that, you know, ordinarily we'd have to go back and ask for.
The general consensus with the addition of Adam and the addition of a new zoning commissioner and land's agent and town manager, I think everybody feels that that's, they all interact great and they have a lot of communication, so...
I also think if we get the e-permitting off the ground, it will, it will make everything a little bit more connected. It'll eliminate some physical hiccups and just keep everything in one respective place that's easily accessible and shows workflow and notes and all that kinda good stuff. So we're, we did receive a grant from the state, so we're in the process of looking at vendors and kind of trying to nail that down.
Good.
Yeah, and that did come up through my discussions, one of the other chairs, and maybe that's something we can address if we have a meeting, as to how it benefits everyone or what, just what it's gonna do, 'cause I don't think everybody's aware of it.
Well, and I think that we've been waiting till we had a platform to sort of tell people what it would do and how it would help them.
Yep. So, anyways, other than that, I put it to Adam. I did solicit his, any constructive criticisms he has of me. He said he didn't have any, I mean, so hopefully that means he feels we communicate well. I have him, I interrupt people, I talk over people. Can point that out at least, so I feel we communicate well, so...
I've never noticed that, sir.
I think what I said was, "Thank you, sir," may have another.
Anyways, so just, so you know, I put...
Cool.
And do well and move forward, so...
That's a good start.
Um, I guess that's it, unless there's any other comment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.